...for Tuesday, November 13th. And I want to welcome you all here. We have a huge group again tonight. We've lately had a couple of crowds like this because we have some very exciting things on our agenda tonight. I want to let you know a little bit of how it's going to go. We will do the Pledge of Allegiance and then we'll have a roll call. We'll approve the agenda for all of you that have these agendas. We'll do appointments and presentations. Within that, we have one of our great honors tonight to be a swearing-in ceremony for two police officers, so we're very excited about that and to have their families here. Then we will do the consent agenda, and that will bring us to H, public hearings; I, unfinished business, there's none; and then J, new business is what several of you here for tonight. First, we will have the canvassing of the municipal results of the November 6, 2018 general election. And then second, many of you are here for the conditional use permit resolution for the community center at 1800 White Bear Avenue North. So it might be a little bit, probably hopefully 30 to 40 minutes, something like that, but shouldn't be too bad. But first of all, I want to wish all of our veterans a Happy Veterans' Day, and I would like to ask any veterans in the room to stand. Stand if you're a veteran, let's give your hand. Thank you for your service. And never forget, the city manager shared with me a tribute to Veterans' Day of poem, and I'm going to read that now. "The Noble and the Brave: A Veterans' Day Tribute. When America had an urgent need, these brave ones raised a hand. No hesitation held them back; they were proud to take a stand. They left their friends and family; they gave up normal life. To serve their country and their God, they plowed into the strife. They fought for freedom and for peace on strange and foreign shores. Some lost new friends; some lost their lives in long and brutal wars. Other veterans answered a call to support the ones who fought. Their country had requirements for the essential skills they brought. We salute every one of them, the noble and the brave, the ones still with us here today and those who rest in a grave. And here's to our country's heroes; they're cut above the rest. Let's give the honor that is due to our country's very best." And that is by Joanna Fuchs. And my dad was a World War II veteran, 18. He lived on a farm and left the farm to go into the Air Force. And on D-Day, he was fortunate to be locked in a room doing some of the planning. But we think of all those people that didn't make it and all of our veterans, and thank you for your service. So with that, we're going to move into the Pledge of Allegiance, and we have three of the Muah sons that are going to come forward and stand at the mic. Ask them to walk up and everybody stand up. And they're going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you could, for the oldest, could you introduce you and your brothers?
Okay. So, my name is Jordan Muah. This is my brother Lennox, and this is also my brother Orlando. And, uh... I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you very much. I love having young people do the pledge, so thank you for doing that. Next, we'll have a roll call by our city clerk Andrea Sint.
Councilmember Abrams. Councilmember Zhang.
Here.
Councilmember Juneman.
Here.
Mayor Slawick.
Here.
And Councilmember Smith is not joining tonight.
Okay. Thank you. And next, we'll have approval of agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved by Zhang and seconded by Juneman, approval of agenda. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Juneman.
I have three short council presentations. American Recycles Week, the Organization of Bridging, and Recycle Your Holidays.
Okay. And I will add, I am going to talk a little bit about the boo-bash and the, I think that was since the last meeting because we had that announced, and then the community engagement breakfast. Anything else? Okay. With that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hearing ayes, all, the agenda is approved. Next, we'll have approval of minutes. The October 25th, 2018 City Council Workshop Minutes.
Move approval of workshop minutes.
Second, but we have a blank that we need to fill in.
Okay. It's been moved by Zhang and seconded by Juneman, the minutes for the October 25th City Council Workshop. So, Councilmember, is there any further discussion?
Yes. Mayor under C, approval agenda, we don't have a second.
And I don't recall who did, but we'll have to find out. You'll find that out, okay. Thank you.
You.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hearing ayes, all, oh, wait, hearing three ayes and one abstain, the minutes are passed. And I think you're abstaining because you were not at that meeting? Yeah, okay. Second, we have the October 25th, 2018 City Council Meeting Minutes.
Move approval of City Council Meeting Minutes for October 25th.
Second.
It's been moved by Zhang and seconded by Juneman, the October 25th, 2018 City Council Meeting Minutes. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Hearing three ayes and one abstention, the meeting minutes passed. That brings us to appointments and presentations. First will be the administrative presentations. We always like when there's small children in the crowd, so don't worry about that. And we will have, first have the council calendar update by our city manager Melinda Coleman.
Thank you, Mayor Slawick. The purpose of the calendar is to give the council a look at what's coming up on our next meetings and to also review some of the items of interest or concern that the council has asked staff to work on. So at our next meeting on November 26th, our workshop will be an update on the North End Study, which is a group of consultants and a steering committee made of business community and residents are looking at future plans for the area around the mall and St. John's Hospital and how that relates to the bus rapid trans at the Rush Line. We're also going to have an update on the Comcast franchise renewal process and where we're at with that. On December 10th, we won't have a workshop. We're reserving that for a potential party, for people who might be leaving the council, Mr. Zhang.
Oh.
And so we'll do that prior to the meeting. Councilmember Zhang.
Mr. State Rep-Elect Zhang, is that who you're talking about?
There you go, yes, our new representative.
Congratulations.
Zhang, congratulations. On January 14th, which will be our first meeting in 2019, we're going to hear from Mr. Love and some others on the XL gas main project. And I just found out about this, and this is going to be a very large undertaking and it's going to inconvenience a lot of our community next year. They're going to be replacing gas lines from Century Avenue all the way to the west end of the city on County Road B. And they will be closing streets as they do the project, and they do it in like 200 feet segments, and so it's going to be really wild. So we will be hearing more about that. At the council meeting, that's also when we'll do the 2019 council and staff appointments to our various committees and boards that we attend in behalf of the city. With regard to some of the other topics of concern or interest that have been brought forward by the council, most of the items on the page are on the list from 1 to 11 have been completed. Tonight, we did hear about the EDA responsibilities and possible program areas, and we are going to move forward with a hearing on that early next year. Tobacco 21 will be back at the second meeting in January. We're also preparing some options for you on the new tree program. And then everything else, I think, is underway. The pedestrian safety plan is quite a big undertaking, so that's going to take us a little while to get through that and put that in an understandable report for you. But the sign removal on vacant buildings is actually scheduled for the Planning Commission next week and for the Design Review Board, so we are moving forward with that. So Mayor, with that, that's all I had on the council calendar unless there are other items or concerns you'd like us to look into.
Council, anything additional? Thank you. I think that's a lot to look into, so we very much appreciate that. Good report. Next, we will move to council presentations. Councilmember Juneman.
Thank you, Mayor. The first one is that this is American Recycles Week, and so if you aren't recycling at your house, this is the time to start, and if you are, this is the time to make it bigger. We're doing well, but people need, everyone, you need everyone to participate. And actually, the 15th is actual American Recycles Day, so you might want to make that your focus. We are a recycling city and we can always do better. Secondly, in October, we had, as you knew probably, curbside pickup of large items from your trash haul are at a reduced rate. But something further that we can all be doing is to donate to people that don't have anything. And one good way to do that with furniture and household goods is bridging. Bridging comes to our spring cleanup, but now this is fall time and we're heading into winter and people have needs. And so there's two ways you can donate. Things that you can handle yourself, you can drop off yourself. And then if you have, this is particularly good, I heard from someone who had to clean out an older relative's house and had a house full of furniture and didn't know what to do with it. So they called Bridging, and Bridging does charge 75 cents, 75 cents, $75. Boy, I must be from 1809. They charge $75, but that's their cost to have it. But if you have a whole house full of furniture, started running around trying to figure out what to do with it, you call Bridging and they pick it up, and then they have an incredible facility, and they do an enormous amount of work for people who have nothing. So if you have that type of an issue, you can either go online and find Bridging or call them. And then finally, since we're talking about recycling, one more time, we're going to do Recycle Your Holidays here at the city. If you have holiday lights that no longer work or you're just not going to use, you can bring them to the drop-off sites at City Hall and 1902, and I believe we're still doing it at the community center, YMCA. And they are sent away, and every little piece of those lights that can be recycled is used. So it's starting December 1st. So when you're dragging them out to decorate your house, don't throw them in the trash, recycle your holidays here. Thank you, Mayor.
I just wanted to add a couple things. They have the boo-bash at the farm on Halloween. And there were just about 1,000 people there, and so I just wanted to thank everyone who came and really thanked our staff for doing that. It was kind of a different kind of event, but obviously it's very popular. Oh. Obviously, it's very popular, my mic was off, to have people come out to the farm and to do that type of event. So thank you to our staff and to everyone who came. And second, we had our community engagement breakfast in October, and that also is very popular, but I also want to encourage anyone here and anyone watching, we always need more businesses involved. So if you'd like to get involved in the community, we work with the chamber on that. We had several really great presentations, and I think one of our big priorities coming up in the next year is going to be economic development, so that was very good. So, thank you. That's council presentations. Next, we have the swearing-in ceremony for our police officers, Aubrey Stock and Amanda, is it Whitehorn? And it's kind of a rare thing for us to see police officers sworn in, so you all get to see this as well. Public Safety Director Scott Nadeau.
Mayor and members of the council, good evening, and tonight is a big night for us in the Maplewood Police Department. We are adding two new members to our family, and this time, we actually were able to do an internal test. So we had 11 applicants who were eligible to be licensed as peace officers who were already employees or volunteers with our police department. So we had police reserves and we had police community service officers, and I think that we should hold it as a badge of honor that we have done such a good job of attracting people to come into our police department to get to know us, to get to know the Maplewood community, to see if this is the fit that they're looking for. And obviously, for us, it's a great privilege to be able to work with some of the people that are entering the field and for us to see if these folks are a good fit for us. So first, I'd like to call up new officer Aubrey Stock. Aubrey, if you could come up, please. Aubrey was born in Tacoma and grew up in Greater Seattle. Aubrey is a triplet and has two brothers, and she also has a younger sister. She did tell me of the triplets, she is the oldest. In middle school, Aubrey started to consider what she wanted to do for a career, and she said that she wanted a career where she would offer, that would offer her the opportunity to interact with a variety of people and provide her with a challenge on a daily basis. She discovered that this fit would be law enforcement. After graduating from high school with honors, Aubrey attended Central Washington University, where she also graduated with honors and received a bachelor degree in law and justice. Shortly after graduating from college, Aubrey was married and she and her husband Brad moved to Minnesota, where Brad was from. Aubrey then attended North Hennepin Community College and Metropolitan State University, where she received her law enforcement licensing certificate. Aubrey was introduced to Maplewood by a good friend of hers, Ashley Bergeron, with whom she attended the Minnesota Police Training Academy. Before being hired as a police officer here in Maplewood, Aubrey was a security supervisor with American Security. She's also been a part-time community service officer with us here in Maplewood. Aubrey and her family reside in Brooklyn Park. Aubrey's four-year-old son Ryland thought it was unfair that his mom was getting him badge and he wasn't, so I'm happy to report that Ryland obtained a badge from the dollar store, and his badge-pinning ceremony actually took place two weeks ago. Aubrey stated that she's looking forward to the many opportunities that she will have to engage and interact with members of the Maplewood community. Please assist me in welcoming Aubrey to the Maplewood Police Department. At this time, Aubrey will be sworn in by city clerk Andrea Sint.
I, Aubrey Stock, do solemn swear, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and of the state of Minnesota, and faithfully discharge the duties of the office of police officer in the city of Maplewood, in the city of Maplewood, in the county of Ramsey, and the state of Minnesota, to the best of my judgment and ability. So I will be that.
For those familiar with law enforcement, and maybe for those who aren't as familiar, the symbol of the badge is one of the most important symbols in American law enforcement. It's in the shape of a shield, and that represents our protection of the public. We in the Maplewood Police Department know very well that our job is a service job and that our job is to work for the people in this community, to uphold the law and the Constitution, and also to meet their needs whenever and whatever those needs are. So we now have something that we call the badge-pinning ceremony, where Aubrey is able to have someone come up and pin the badge on her. And Aubrey, have you selected the person that you would like to come up and pin the badge on you?
Yes, my husband Brad.
Okay. There you go, Brad. All right. Thank you, Brad. Aubrey, you can go ahead and step to the side here if you'd like. Mayor and council, I also have the ability or the privilege to swear on our second officer tonight, Amanda Wheathorn. Amanda was born in St. Paul and grew up in the Hastings area before moving to Aiken during her freshman year in high school. Throughout high school, Amanda excelled both academically and in sports, where she was a varsity member of both the softball and the volleyball teams. After high school, Amanda attended the University of Minnesota Morris with intentions of majoring in medicine before deciding to pursue her childhood dream of a career in law enforcement. In order to prepare for a law enforcement career, Amanda enlisted in the Minnesota National Guard in October of 2016 so that she could prepare both physically and mentally for being a police officer. She remains active with the National Guard today. Amanda next attended Alexandria Technical and Community College, where she completed her law enforcement and skills training. Amanda joined the Maplewood Police Reserve Program in January of this year, which has allowed her to become acclimated to the Maplewood Police Department for the last 10 months. She currently lives in Maplewood and is in the process of purchasing a home in the area. Before being hired as a police officer here in Maplewood, Amanda was an intelligence analyst with the Minnesota Army National Guard, working out of the Washington County Sheriff's Office. Amanda stated that she is looking forward to working in the Maplewood community so that she can maximize her daily interactions with community members, as well as the opportunity to be a positive influence on the people that she meets. So at this time, we'll call up Andrea Sint, our city clerk, to swear in Amanda.
I, Amanda Wheathorn. Do solemn swear, that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Minnesota, and faithfully discharge the duties of the office of police officer in the city of Maplewood, in the county of Ramsey, and the state of Minnesota, to the best of my judgment and ability. So I will be that. Keep it to me.
And Amanda, is there someone that you would like to have come up and pin your badge?
Am I done?
Okay. She's in the back here. Welcome.
Thank you, sir.
There you go. Mayor and members of the council, it has, as you know, been a time of change in law enforcement, and there are those who say that it's getting harder and harder to find people that want to come into law enforcement, and that it's getting harder to find really good quality folks that want to do the job of police officer. We are indeed very fortunate to have such high caliber people as Amanda and Aubrey that can join our team and help us to do the important work that we have to do in our community. So if the council would like to come down for a photograph?
Thank you. Like you have to stay for the next couple of items because you'll be here a long time. So if you, a lot of times after swearing-in, people will go, we'll see what happens here.
It is really exciting always to swear new police officers, but it can't be any more exciting than two female police officers.
I agree. They're all exciting, but it is nice to see two young women, so fantastic. Thank you, and congratulations. It's always exciting. Now, next, we have our proclamation for Small Business Saturday. And what was interesting, council, is when I was on my way here, I heard our United States Small Business Administration leader, Linda McMahon, I believe is her name, talking about this on the radio. So everybody know what Small Business Saturday is, right? It's kind of like Friday, where you patronize the big businesses, and then on Saturday, looking at the small businesses. So city manager Coleman, I will just proceed to read this, is that, we'll do that. So proclamation, whereas the government of Maplewood, Minnesota celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 30.2 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7 of all businesses with employees in the United States and are responsible for 65.9% of net new jobs created from 2000 to 2017. Now, there'll be several whereeses. And whereas, small businesses employ 47.5% of the employees in the private sector of the United States, whereas 90% of consumers in the United States say Small Business Saturday has had a positive impact on their community. And whereas, 89% of consumers who are aware of Small Business Saturday said the day encourages them to shop small all year long. And whereas, 73% of consumers who reportedly shopped small at independently-owned retailers and restaurants on Small Business Saturday did so with friends and family. Whereas, the most reported reason for consumers aware of the day to shop and dine at a small, independently-owned business was to support their community, 64%. And whereas, Maplewood, Minnesota supports our local businesses that create And whereas, Maplewood, Minnesota supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas, advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. We want to now proclaim this Small Business Saturday and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support a small business and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. So I think that's really good, you know? We think of, I mean, these days, it's a lot of Amazon and things like that, and that might support small businesses, but we know with Black Friday, there are the big ones. So continue to support our small businesses. So that'll be entered for the record. Thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda. Usually, these items are considered routine and non-controversial and are approved by one motion of the council. Can I hear a motion?
Move approval of consent agenda.
Second.
One through 12.
It's been moved by Jean and seconded by Abrams, Consent Agenda Items 1 through 12. Is there any further discussion? See none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hearing ayes, all, the consent agenda is approved. So this is good news, we're moving very quickly. So again, with no public hearings, no unfinished business, that moves us to new business. So a lot of people are here for item one and item two. Item one on new business is canvassing the municipal results of the November 6th, 2018 general election. You know, I just want to take a moment and say, we had an amazing turnout in Maplewood and across Minnesota for the election. And I think it really surprised people because it's the midterms and not the presidential year. You know, this is a kind of a different, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail here, but as you may know, we have some people that clearly are going to be on the council. It's Councilmember Juneman. We have some people that are moving on to higher office, Councilmember Jean. And then we have people that are staying on the council and don't warrant up for election, Councilmember Smith. And then we have a tie tonight of, I think it's 55?
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven hundred and fifty-five votes. Two people in Maplewood got the exact same number of votes. So tonight, by statute, there is a coin flip to resolve this issue. I don't know if it totally resolves the issue, but it is the process. So I'm going to let the city manager talk about it from here. Okay? And congratulations to all.
Thank you, Mayor Slawick, members of the city council. As the mayor indicated, we are required by state law to, as the governing body of the city, to conduct an election and to act as the canvassing board. The canvass results, they need to look at the canvass results and declare the results of an election between the third and 10th day after an election. So that's why we're here this evening. Council, you received a report that was put on the Diaz tonight, as we just got the information from Ramsey County yesterday, which talks about the number of votes and the number of registered voters, the number of people voted by precinct. And so that is there for your benefit. For tonight, I'd like to have you, first call on Andrea Sint to walk you through the numbers of the actual report. And then Joe Mansky, the election official for Ramsey County, is here, and will talk about the election and the results and what we need to do to declare a winner tonight.
Okay, thank you. So Andrea Sint, our city clerk, if you would like to give the report.
Thank you, mayor and council. So we did have the state general election on Tuesday, November 6th. We did have a great turnout. Actually, absentee voting was very active also, not just the day of. As far as from my perspective, we had amazingly a very cooperative, collaborative event. Ramsey County has always been very supportive and available through the whole process for us. The public work staff comes early on Monday morning and brings all of the election equipment out to the polling sites. And then Wednesday, they return it all back, all like magic elves for us, and so we really appreciate that. We have judges and our area logistic judges, they are traveling judges that go and do troubleshooting, the judges at the precincts, they are there from 6:00 AM until they're done. And everybody works a full shift. New this year, we had student judges at some of the locations, and I've heard very good things from the head judges, that the student judges were very engaged, they really enjoyed watching the whole process. So that was something that was an initiative of Ramsey County, and they had an excess, and they asked if they could have some of them join our, in our precincts, and we said, sure, great. And so that was an added bonus for us. As far as city staff here, we had people from all different areas of the city helping us with either the absentee board, counting absentee ballots. We've had, we had people help cover other daily activities. So this isn't just the city clerk division trying to get this done. We called in to play other, other people who were very willing to help. And also, the PD let us use their hallway for absentee voting because we had over 1,300 people here over those days, and so that was most welcome, that we were able to spread out a little bit. And as far as the city clerk division staff, they have been doing this for many, many years, and they are very good at what they do, and I very much appreciate what they have done. Just looking at total numbers, just a brief overview, for the general election, we had 17,848 votes that, ballots that were cast. In 2015, for the general, there was 10,520, so there was quite an uptick there. As City Manager Coleman said, tonight, you are serving as the canvass board to canvass the results and declare the results. So I'm going to read what has happened so that it's read into record here. The mayor was on the ballot for a four-year term. Results were that Margaret Barons had 5,482 votes, and Nora Slawick had 9,475 votes. And with that, the mayoral candidate with the most votes is Nora Slawick, and so she will be serving a four-year term. We had two councilmember positions for four-year terms on the ballot. Mary Lee Abrams had 5,755 votes, Kevin Burgland, 5,293 votes, Kathleen A. Kathy Juneman had 6,173 votes, and Nikki Vellis-Vicencio had 5,755 votes. So with that, the candidate with the most votes was Kathleen A. Kathy Juneman, and the remaining seat has ended in a tie, as it was mentioned, between Mary Lee Abrams and Nikki Vellis-Vicencio. So per state statute 204(c)(34), the canvassing board shall determine the tie by lot, which is typically by a coin toss. And the candidate winning the tie will be entered into the resolution that I'm going to be asking you to approve. All of these positions are four-year terms to begin on Monday, January 7th, 2019. And once the contest time has expired and the certificate of filings have been submitted, then certificates of election will be issued to each successful candidate. And just a matter of bookkeeping, I do need all of you on the council to sign the abstract before leaving tonight, so that I can get that to Ramsey County. So ultimately, I'm going to need a motion to approve the resolution canvassing the results of the November 6th, 2018 general election. We do have some other business to do with that, which is the coin toss, and as was mentioned, Joe Mansky is here from Ramsey County to give a little more insight into the workings of this past election.
I think, first of all, a good report. Thank you, Andrea, for your leadership and your staff, and then all the election judges and all of the people you mentioned. I mean, we know it is not an easy process, and now with early voting, there's just a lot to it, right? So thank you, you guys did a great job. Now we want to talk to Mr. Mansky, if he'd like to come forward. And I know the council would like to hear about what happened in the last couple of days, as well as the council may have some questions for you.
Certainly. Thanks, Mayor Slawick, and the council members. I'm Joe Mansky, I'm the Ramsey County Elections Manager. And in one of our many capacities, we compile the results that are counted in your polling places and those votes that are, that are cast prior to Election Day, which increasingly is a large number of votes. This year, 24% of our total voting was actually cast prior to Election Day, and that amounted to over 60,000 votes cast prior to Election Day, which is an all-time record by, by a substantial margin for a year when the governor is on the ballot. On election night, as you can imagine, we try to act as rapidly as we can to get election results out on the Secretary of State's website. And in our haste to do so, and again, I'm, I will not stand before you and try to excuse any of this, but in our, in our haste to get the results out as rapidly as possible, we neglected to upload one of these. And this is a, this is a memory drive that's in all of our ballot counters, and this is what the votes are stored on. We have about 220 of these countywide, and one of them was used here at City Hall for, actually 13 of them, one for every precinct, to, to count the votes that were being cast here at City Hall by people choosing to vote in person, absentee. And again, we neglected to upload this, the results from this drive. There are 68 ballots worth of information on here. And since we are in a position where we are obligated to, to put out unaudited results on election night because that is the expectation of the community, we did not start our auditing process until this weekend. We worked right through the weekend and on Veterans Day holiday as well. We discovered on Sunday that there apparently be, there was apparently a small discrepancy between the number of people voting in one of the precincts, in precinct 12, and the number of ballots that we had, that we had more ballots than we had people, or more people than ballots. So when the staff returned on Monday morning, I requested to have them look through the absentee devices again, and that's when we discovered that there was one of them from precinct 12 that we did not upload. This is again, 68 ballots worth of information. And so as a consequence of that, it changed the results slightly, but in a substantial fashion. So where we had, where we apparently had a winner by seven votes, that in reality, we have a tie between those two candidates. And even before I knew I was coming down here this morning, I did have a conversation with, with my staff about that, and I can just, I can tell you without any reservation that we are absolutely committed to make sure that something like this never happens again. And we, we think we know why this did happen and are already planning to make sure that we never see anything like this again.
Thank you. I do think we have some council folks that want to say a few words. Councilmember Juneman?
Sure. Thank you. I appreciate your coming tonight, Jill. But I do have to say that it was a little disconcerting and upsetting to find this happened again, since we had an issue at primary time as well. And any city doesn't want to experience this. We in particular, as you know, have other issues that sometimes color things, and so it was a little upsetting. And I'm glad to hear you say it's never going to happen again, but we did hear that after the primary. And I had some calls from constituents in the last few days saying, "Why does this keep happening to us?" And I said, "Well, I think it's just fate that it happened here a second time." And there are actually some people, old like me, who think it was more accurate in the old days when people were saying they were the pencil and doing this. And so knowing that we're using technology and that all comes down to those little things, I think I would suggest, I'm sure you've thought about it and are going over it, but there has to be a more careful way to check those in so that this cannot happen again. Because it is unfortunate for everyone, for the whole council, for the community, and certainly for the two people involved. I breathe a sigh of relief that it wasn't me, I got to admit. So I'm hoping that that is the whole focus right now, is how do you check those in so that they are very carefully handled, so that this cannot happen again. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Juneman, that is exactly the conversation that we were having this morning, and I think all of us recognize that that needs to happen. This, this voting system is still relatively new to us, and so we're kind of learning as we go along with it. To be honest with you, if, if I could have started the year over again, there are a number of things I would have done differently, but you know, that's, I guess, water under the bridge at that point. I think what we need to do now is learn from the mistakes that we've made and get better as a result of it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Abrams.
Thank you. As one of the council members that is part of the tie, I'll reiterate certainly what Councilmember Juneman said. The accuracy of our voting system is fundamental to our democracy, and the fact that this happened twice is very concerning and calls to question the integrity of the system. I recall after the primary and the difficulty that happened there, we did receive assurances that nothing would happen like this during the general election. And we were also told that the county had run certain tests to make sure that the election would be accurate, that it would run smoothly, and that we wouldn't have any problems. And obviously, those tests didn't work. And I guess at this point, I would strongly urge you that you need to figure this out. This is just not acceptable for our community, for our citizens, for the whole electoral process. It's very disappointing, and you know, it's very unfortunate that it happened in our community, or any community.
Yeah, I agree with you, Councilmember Abrams. And actually, the, the increased testing we did during the summer and fall did successfully deal with some of the issues that we saw during the summer, but, but clearly, as Councilmember Juneman mentioned, we need to have and we will have a better, a better way of keeping track of our, all of our memory devices to make sure that, that all of them get, get uploaded properly and promptly on election night. And because I absolutely guarantee you that that is going to happen.
Councilmember Jean.
Thank you, mayor. You know, same things the other members have said. I'm, I'm glad to hear that, you know, you've come up, come to us with some steps forward and some, some things that you're looking to do and that you, we have your guarantee. But having said that, you know, we have, in this room, we have lots of first-time voters. This room, we have voters who are hearing stuff nationally that are concerned about our voting system, the integrity of our ability to vote, and so this is really, really concerning. We have the news here, not to cover any of the great things that we're doing here in our city of Maplewood, but to, you know, cover a coin toss for who's going to win for city, our city council election. So that's, that's definitely not okay with me, and certainly not okay with the members who are on the ballot right now. And so we hope to work with you, we want you to succeed, and you know, we, we really do not want to have to do, do this again.
Yeah, and again, Councilmember Jean, I, all I can do is absolutely commit to you that, and in your new position as well, that, that me and my staff will, will work diligently to make sure that, that every election we conduct from here on out is, is completely accurate, and I think you can count on that.
So not, not to pile on, Mr. Mansky, but we've known each other a long time.
Yes.
You know, I've had a couple, I had two recounts in my past, and so we know, in general, Ramsey County elections have obviously a good reputation. You're seen as one of the key analysts, key mentors for people all over the state in voting. So, so to say the least, we were surprised, and we were surprised to see results change several days after the election. And then, of course, we were surprised that it was a tie, right? So everything, it's kind of one thing after the next, and it's, it's, it is very unfortunate, and it, it does make people think about the integrity of the process. And so one question I had for you is if one of the, how a recount would work? How would that, if, who would request a recount if the coin toss, if the, somebody's not satisfied with that? How does that process work?
Yeah, and let me just kind of, I'll just back up one step. The reason that you're doing the, the coin toss... doing the, the coin toss, or the coin toss, is that the state law requires that there be a definitive result for every election. And uh, of course, any candidate can request a recount, no matter what the margin is. Where the margins are small, the recounts are paid for by the, by the public. And uh, and in this case, uh, what, uh, should the losing candidate be interested in going down that route, uh, I would just offer to you that, uh, our staff will, would conduct the recount at our expense. And we would do that at, at our facility because that's where the ballots are. And uh, my preference would be not, uh, not to move the ballots anywhere. Again, should the losing candidate be interested in doing that, we're, we're certainly prepared, uh, to do that.
So I, so I have a question for staff. Is, if, uh, because about certifying tonight, we would not know the, if there's a recount requested, do we still certify tonight? We do. And then there's a recount and then we recertify? Is that how the process works? Okay. And that, we don't know if that's going to happen or not. And some, people don't um, often decide on recounts immediately. Uh, it depends when I, um...
And, and the losing candidate has seven days from tonight-
Seven days.
-to file a written request for recount.
Okay. Thank you. So I, I think you've heard it earful. I see that, um, Ramsey County Commissioner's, uh, Victoria Reinhardt's aide is here, Darren Tobolz. So we're glad you're here to do, today too. And we think, are you gonna carry the message back to Commissioner Reinhardt that this can't happen and it can't happen in Maplewood again? And you know, this has been, um, uh, our candidates have worked very hard. And then to think the election went one way and then to have it go to a tie, of all things, we just, this is amazing. And now to have to do the coin flip. So I, I urge you guys to, um, look at this as well. With that, what are the next steps? Are we...
Uh, Mayor Slawick, members of the city council, um, I'd like to have Andrea Sint come down. And she will go through the process of how we determine, uh, who gets to pick first on the coin side. Um, and I think in order to make this more efficient, I think if, uh, Councilmember Abrams and, and Council candidate Nikki would come up to the podium, we can conduct that so that you can see what's happening.
Someone early going down to Nikki? Is she coming up? Okay.
So in, in talking about the coin toss, we, but, okay, a coin toss is great. However, who's gonna call it? And so what we've done is we've decided, the best way we could come up with was to have each of the candidates put a number between one and ten, put two numbers between one and ten in case they tie on the first one again. Um, and, and then I have one through ten out on pieces of paper. I'm gonna fold them up, put them in a bowl, and I'm gonna ask for a volunteer from the audience to pull. And so that way we can, um, decide who will then call the coin toss. It's a two-step process here.
They're writing down their numbers? Is that the...
Yeah.
Yep.
And while they're writing down, I'm gonna fold each one twice. And then I will be calling for somebody from the audience to come and choose a number. So then it will be whoever is closest without going over, because we have to have some rules about that. So they can't be the same distance apart. So whoever is closest without going over, or if they're match, the number that's pulled, that person will then call the coin toss that Mr. Mansky will be doing.
You're witnessing history, just-
Just a couple.
-to note what this is, right?
All right. So do I have anybody from the audience that's willing? Okay. Do we have both of yours? All right. Yours, all right. As this is the, as this is the first time I've done this, I'm not quite sure the order I should do anything in. So anyways, here we go. The number pulled is nine. And the person closest without going over is candidate Villa Vicencio. So you will be calling the coin toss. And you're just gonna let it drop.
Okay. Here's our, our coin. Susan Bianthen is on one side. And the eagle is on the other. So.
Yes.
Your call. Well, it's near.
Okay.
Three, two, one.
Susan Bianthen.
Everybody wants to hear what it is?
It is Susan Bianthen.
Okay. So I think we have a winner. So, and could the city clerk officially...
Yes. I, we will cha, put that in the resolution that goes to the county that says that, um, the second seat is taken by Nikki Villa Vicencio.
Thank you. Thank you all. Congratulations. Uh, Nikki also had the seven vote lead, so... So here in Maplewood, we always, always have sort of backups, which is, you know, we do have a member leaving the council. And so I just want to remind everybody, there will be an appointment process for a member to replace Councilmember Zhang, um, as well as a special election sometime next year for that. And so, um, Councilmember Abrams, you're well aware. And yes, just remember that. And for our council, um, very hard when there's a tie, uh, when you think about appointments, I think. We're just going to think through that carefully. And I, when are we doing that? City Manager Coleman?
The appointment schedule will be done, the first meeting in January.
First meeting in January, because we, we have to wait, uh, until our friend here resigns. And he's not gonna do that. We hope retires, uh, after we are done for the year.
The budget, yeah.
We're hoping, and get through our budget. So we can't do that until that time. Um, and with that, we will move on. That was very dramatic.
Do the motion?
Nope. Yes, to certify.
Uh, move to approve the resolution canvassing the results of the November sixth, two thousand eighteen general election.
Is there a second? It has to be. Okay. Uh, it's been moved by Zhang and seconded by Juneman, a motion to certify the canvassing of the municipal results of the November sixth, twenty eighteen general election. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, unanimous. Uh, and uh, the results are certified. So, thank you. Wow, that's a lot of drama. We have to take a deep breath for that. Okay. All right. Now, what the rest of the room is waiting for is next, which is our conditional use permit resolution for the community center, eighteen hundred White Bear Avenue North. Uh, first, we're gonna have a staff presentation, then we're gonna have, I believe there's somebody here right from the Planning Commission.
Yeah.
Uh, they will speak. Uh, then we will have the, um, folks that are proposing development talk. Then we will have, if there's anybody that wants to talk, we, uh, two people that are not in favor of the development talk. Did I cover it all?
Mm-hmm. And I can give an intro.
That's kind of the process. So, City Manager Coleman, can you tee that up?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Slawick, members of the city council. Uh, this evening, the applicant is requesting approval of a conditional use permit to operate a community center, which includes the uses of a banquet hall, a sports bar and a restaurant, a fitness gym, and office space for eighteen hundred White Bear Avenue. And as you mentioned, Mayor, um, I would just add that Mr. Martin will give the staff report to you. Uh, Mr. Dom is here from the Planning Commission to give their report. We have the applicant here. And then I think we have, um, Sue Alson Alheiser, who would like to speak on behalf of the residents in her neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Martin?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Uh, pointing our direction to the screens in front of you, uh, for the slideshow that we have, uh, the red outline, uh, on, that's overlaid on the map outlines the property in question tonight. That is eighteen hundred White Bear Avenue North. Uh, that has the use up until this request has been the junior achievement building. So the applicant is looking to purchase this building, uh, and readapt, uh, for the uses talking about tonight. Uh, the zoning for this site, and actually everywhere that you see on the, the hatched, uh, lines on the map on the right side, that indicates mixed-use zoning and land use. So that's not just this parcel, it's the parcels on the west side of White Bear and several of the parcels on the east side of White Bear that were guided and zoned, uh, mixed-use several years ago as a result of the Hillcrest Small Area Plan. Uh, as part of the mixed-use zoning district in the city of Maplewood, uh, the uses that are mentioned as part of this proposed use as restaurants, uh, a restaurant, a bar, uh, office space, and the fitness center are actually all permitted uses permitted by right, uh, in the zoning code. So that brings us to the community center, uh, which we're considering the banquet hall to be part of that community center, uh, to be consistent with what the MCC went through when that community center was, and banquet hall was approved. Requires a conditional use permit, which conditional use permits for a community center are allowed in any zoning district, uh, within the city. So this shows the floor plan as, uh, proposed by the applicant that was included with your staff report. As you can see, the banquet hall, uh, would take up the, the dominant space of the structure, uh, eighteen, or I'm sorry, eight thousand square feet, but also the, the sports bar, restaurant, the fitness gym, and office space, uh, finishing up the remainder space of that building. The, the parking, I'll keep that, uh, quick and can I answer any questions if there's specific parking questions? But I'll just summarize that, uh, the existing site already exceeds the amount of parking that the, the code would require for this mix of uses. Uh, so from city staff's view, we do not have any parking concerns. Uh, there is, I should add, there is no exterior improvements planned with this proposal. So they're not expanding the building, uh, they're not expanding the parking lot, or retracting anything like that. So what you see on site is what they're moving forward. We did build into the conditional use permit just as a reinforcement of the code requirement that if they do ever reface the building, expand the building, make any other exterior site changes, significant site changes, uh, they would be required to go through the city's design review process. Uh, to summarize the engagement that occurred with this project, uh, prior to submitting their application to the city, uh, the applicant did hold a neighborhood meeting on their own and notified property owners within five hundred feet. Uh, the applicant can talk more, uh, about that meeting, uh, if the council desires, uh, to have questions there. There was information included in your staff report outlining this developer, or applicant neighborhood meeting as well. Uh, once the application was made to the city, as per city policy, staff sent out, uh, property, a survey, neighborhood survey to property owners within five hundred feet. Uh, and those twelve responses are outlined in your staff report. Uh, the public hearing notice, uh, that was held at the Planning Commission meeting, the public hearing was, the notices for that hearing were also sent to, to these same property owners within five hundred feet and also published in the newspaper. Uh, the Planning Commission held that public hearing on October sixteenth. Commissioner Dom, as mentioned, is here to provide the Planning Commission report. Uh, but they did recommend approval moving forward. So to summarize, staff is also recommending, uh, approval of the conditional use permit. Uh, as I mentioned at the, the front end, the banquet hall really drives the need for the, the conditional use permit. But because of the unique mixture of uses within one building, we're trying to use, or we are using the CUP, uh, instrument as a way to manage all those uses, uh, together. So the conditions do include, uh, traffic control plan during large banquet events, additional landscaping required along White Bear Avenue, which would include trees and shrubs, uh, to help with the site aesthetics, but also more importantly, for light control, spillage from headlights to properties on the other side of White Bear. Uh, some cleanup items to the site, uh, including restriping the parking lot, uh, clearing the site of debris, and then constructing trash enclosures as code requires. Uh, we also reinforce in the CUP conditions that all applicable licenses, uh, would be required to, uh, be obtained from the city before a certificate of occupancy is granted. Uh, we do not need to put this in the CUP to make this a requirement. This would be required regardless. But we want to emphasize both, uh, to the applicant and everyone, uh, participating in this process that they do have other steps to move forward, namely the liquor license, which requires separate city council approval at a later date. So with that, against, uh, city council, staff is recommending approval of the request tonight and can stand for any questions from the council.
Counsel, any questions? Councilmember Zhang?
One of the good concerns in here was the traffic, uh, and parking spaces. Um, have there been instances where, when junior achievement was still the, the host of it, where it filled up? Or was it a constant thing?
Mayor and council, uh, I, I and staff are not aware of any parking or traffic control issues as a result of the junior achievement, uh, use being there throughout the years. That's never come up on our code enforcement radar. Uh, Mr. Love can speak more to the traffic analysis, but it was included in your staff report that a staff engineer did look at the proposed uses and the, the rating of the roads and the, um, Steve would know the word, the, the...
Number of parking spaces and capacity.
The capacity, thank you, of those roads. And that traffic, uh, is not a concern along White Bear Avenue.
If you, uh, Mr. Love, can you also talk a little bit, I can throw this in, on this too, is about the lighting and was there, because junior achievement was a daytime business. Was there really any, uh, lighting issues? But I'd like you to answer Councilmember Zhang's question first.
Sure. Uh, Mayor and council, so to kind of give you a lo, idea of what kind of traffic level White Bear Avenue handles, it's, uh, it's considered an A minor augmentor. Uh, that's the, the classification. And just to kind of give you, um, an idea of what that means, the very next rating up is a principal arterial. These are, uh, roads such as Highway thirty-six, uh, thirty-five E. Those are considered principal arterial. So White Bear Avenue is the very next one down. So certainly, uh, the, White Bear Avenue is, you know, it's expected to have this higher volume of traffic. And, uh, we don't anticipate any negative impacts from that. As far as the lighting, uh, I'm afraid I, I might have to throw that back to Mike Martin here.
Mr. Martin?
Mayor and council, in terms of lighting, the city does have a, an ordinance requirement, uh, and that dictates, uh, light spillage. So it's point four foot candles at the property line. So regardless of previous use or proposed use, that's the standard. Uh, I believe the applicant is not initially, uh, indicating that they're proposing to change the, the light, lighting on the site. Uh, but if it was an issue, or becomes an issue, or they do change things, uh, that point four foot candle standard is what does that play? That they have to make sure they're meeting so they're not spilling light off affecting neighbors?
Yeah. That's the big thing. And I think that that's, you know, we've, I, you know, I'll just be honest, I met with, um, both the applicant and the neighbors. And I, you know, honestly, folks, I'm hoping there's, you know, room for compromise here. And, and looking at the issues and, and figuring this out. And I think, um, we heard from both sides, there's some, some room, uh, there. But, uh, we don't want to have, you know, you don't want it to be like a, um, I heard, I don't know if it's a Target parking lot or like a huge, you know, where you have the great big lights and all of that kind of thing. But you do have to have some lighting, obviously, because you're a business, right? So it's kind of, you know, you want to make, make everything work there. At least, that's, that's what I'm saying. Uh, other questions, council members? Uh, Councilmember Juneman?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, it was referred to in a couple comments from, um, neighbors, um, about security issues and safety issues. So I guess we should ask the Public Safety Director if he anticipates anything based on what we've seen, so, what we see so far.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, I did consult with, uh, Mr. Martin and some of the others, uh, in the project. Uh, I would say that my experience with, uh, the service of alcohol in large crowds has much more to do with the responsibility of the ownership, uh, of the establishment that's serving it. In other words, are they doing a, a careful job of screening for underage people? Are they, um, training their staff to not, uh, serve intoxicated people, or to have controls in place about how to prevent that? So, um, I did, uh, look at the layout. Uh, Mr. Martin and I did discuss. And, um, I do not have any issues necessarily with the site plan. Uh, and I would be happy to meet with any prospective owners about, uh, issues that may stem from alcohol service.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions, council? I think the next step, uh, is Planning Commission?
Yes.
Okay. Plant, Mr. Dom, welcome to the council. If you'd like to give us your report.
Yes, uh, Mayor, um, city manager and the members of the council. We were, um, we reviewed this at the Planning Commission. And there, um, there was quite a bit of discussion about this. A lot of that seemed to be centered around an allowable use, which was the bar. So I can understand that people are concerned, but those were allowable uses, you know, regardless of what the conditional use permit process. Um, some of the members of the Planning Commission still voted against this because they had concerns about traffic and they had concerns about a bar. But ultimately, we did, uh, pass this and recommend approval.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
And next, we hear from the applicant. So if you'd like to come forward and tell us about your project, uh, I, you know, I have to say, um, I met with you with, uh, Councilmember Abrams. And, uh, you know, it's like anybody else, right? You have hope, you know, but in a really exciting way, you have hopes and dreams, right?
Yes.
About what you want to do, about what you want to bring to me- About what you want to do, about what you want to bring to Maplewood-
Very much so.
-and bring to our community and bring to the community, and so I think it's important that you tell us about that.
Okay, and thank you all very much for your time. Also, thank you to the community for your support, and thank you to all the neighbors for addressing your concerns, because we hear it. First off, we are the prospective buyer, I am one of the co-owners, so it's not just me. And main thing is that when we, our plans to buy this property is not only to be, to operate it, but also to be a landlord, which means that the fitness gym and the office areas, we were approached by potential prospect tenants that when they heard about the, that we were going to have a banquet hall or a restaurant bar, they were very, very excited, and that's why they came to me, and that's why I worked with Door Constructions to lay out the various quarters that would accommodate my tenants. And on the tenancy side, my company, we have been running a real estate management business for over five years, so we are very well versed in city codes and ordinances and complying with all of that, because it is very critical to public safety as well as neighborhood cooperation. For the fitness gym, the owner, I mean, the attendant, he's very, very excited, and he'll probably be approaching you guys for assistance as well. But what's important here is the banquet hall, because that's why we applied for the conditional use permit, is because we know that it's a conditional use. And I think throughout the process, from our neighborhood meeting greet, we met, we met the business owners adjacent to us, and then we also met some of the neighbors that were able to come out, and we had a great time chatting. More importantly was from the planning commission meeting, that's where we heard the concerns, and we as owners are very, we want to be proactive, we want to ensure that the neighborhood voices are heard, and we want to act proactively. We also want all of you to know, including the neighbors, that we are not a nightclub, we are not another Stargate. We are good people, we're not targeting gang members. People who support our business plans, they're here, they're so happy, so proud of us, and we are also very happy and proud that if this becomes a reality, that not only would we be doing something good for just the community, but also for the city of Maplewood and our neighbors, because we will be a source or a place where they can come and enjoy good food. I'm going to move right into the important issues here, such as we saw the recommendations, we're going to act on those, but more importantly are the neighborhood concerns, and these concerns are very legitimate. First off, when we heard about smoking and also ensuring that there are designated areas, I jumped on the phone, called up Door Construction and said, you know, let's look at the site, and let's look at places where we can light barrier so that it's not visible from White Bear, and we have picked out a couple of locations that are right along the building, but ensuring that it's far enough from the people inside, but then also not visible from White Bear Avenue. So Door Construction and myself, we're going to take responsibility on that. We also know that moving into this site, it's going to be a big change, especially for our neighbors, but we also want to ensure that we have a buffer zone to let our customers know that, you know, this is where you're bounded, you know? And so we see that along White Bear, especially like right out in front of the Aldrich Arena sidewalk, there are brushes, and so we plan to, in the spring, plant some new landscaping there that will kind of give it that nice feel, but buffer zone, so that if you're on sidewalk, you know, you know your boundaries, if you're in the parking area, you know your boundaries. So that's definitely in our plan for the spring. Another two big issues, which are just interferences or disturbances that we will try, we will try to act on and ensure is lighting and noise. Lighting, thank you for informing us about the ordinance, we will definitely follow the ordinance, but the last three nights, my wife and I, we've gone out there just to see how the light changes every night, and there is sufficient lighting, but we also want to ensure that for public safety reasons, that when the customers come in and out, that they feel safe as well. But I don't think that there's any need to add on to the lighting fixtures, but I think there is definitely a need to look at the ordinance to make sure that we are following the ordinance. Hours of operation, I think that's a definite concern, especially being within a city, the neighborhood region. We do see ourself, our restaurant bar, we do see ourself like a typical Buffalo Wild Wings, we're going to be family friendly, and anybody who comes in, they will know that this is a family friendly location, and if they don't belong there, they'll know right away. And we know that we will have some competition, but it's fine, and what I mean by that is we'll have some, like the Buffalo Wild Wings, they close at 1:00 a.m., but we know that we're in a community neighborhood zone as well, and so we're, we're going to ensure that on Sunday through Thursday, we're closed by 11:00 p.m., and then on Fridays and Saturdays, doors are shut by 12:00 p.m. for our customers. And so we are going to take some potential sacrifices and business loss so that our neighbors and the city of Maplewood can work together as partners for a prosperous future. And we're happy that being in this building has already attracted other business owners, such as ones who want to come in and do the fitness gym. We hope that similarly, other businesses will see that, okay, you know, they're there, we should be around that area too. So that's our hope, and for the future of Maplewood, you know, let's grow together, let's be prosperous, and let's just do the right thing, do what's right for both the neighbor and also for the city and ourselves. So, thank you very much for all of your time, thank you.
Well, thank you, and I think I, as we look at, you know, I've tried to find sort of a comparison, and I don't know if this is fair, Councilmember Zhang, or if it's, you know, so I told you guys maybe like Mung House, right, or something, but it's more than that, because you have, you're going to have a restaurant, and then the restaurant's going to be sort of like a sports bar, right? So there's going to be TVs and stuff like that.
Similar to Buffalo, yep.
And then banquet facilities, we have, you know, the community center in Maplewood is a banquet facility, so I'm trying to help people understand sort of things to compare to, right? And a lot of people have been to the community center for banquets and different things, it would be similar to that. You mentioned to us you're going to do sort of dancing competitions and-
Yes, oh, thank you for reminding me, because there, a lot of them are here to support us tonight too, because they don't have a home, they don't have a place to perform. It's the any Asian dance team, thank you very much for coming here. Also, many of our community leaders from the Mung and the Asian ethnic groups, thank you very much for being here. I think that we are under demand, that's why I think they're showing a lot of their support. Most of the time, we're having to travel as far out as Brooklyn Park, Brooklyn Center to even host a wedding or to, for a graduation party for those types of event, and here, we have pretty much like only Mung House and partially using White Dragon, and so we are under demand. I mean, just in Maplewood alone, the Mung community is over 6,000, and so if you count in East Side, North St. Paul, it really adds up, and we really need a second home, and in fact, you know, I think that this will, because it's so close to where all of us are located, that it'll actually become home, and so it's awesome. I do want to correct one miscommunication, and I still haven't traced back to where the notes came, but I think it might have been my fault from the drawing. For some reason, the community center word got involved, got included in here, and so, yeah, it's, we have a business name for it, you know, we have our holding company name that's buying the property, but, you know, our business name is just Unison by Nocha, and so that's, the reason why it's called Unison is because we'll have multiple awesome things going on in the building at the same time, so that's all, yeah.
Yeah, and I think, I think, yeah, for, for our community too, is we, we have an empty building there, right? And it's a, it's a great location in terms of-
That is correct.
Part of Maplewood, I mean, White Bear is our busiest, must be our busiest street with most of our businesses, and I, we want to have a good business there, right? And I think, you know, you are going to add a lot to the community. Now, I want to hear the whole story, we have to go through-
Yes.
-the whole hearing tonight, but for me, I see a lot of promise, and I think, I think that that's important.
We do too, thank you.
Now, we have a couple of questions or comments, councilmember Juneman, Abrams, and then Zhang.
I can wait till after.
Okay, you want to wait, or?
Thank you, I just, I, I'm glad you said something about the term community center, because it's confusing to people.
Correct, correct.
And it infers competition that's not really there, and so I think even staff, maybe from now on, we should use his name with event center or whatever, so that it's distinctive from community center, so that takes away that confusion.
Yeah, good point.
Thank you, Catherine.
Councilmember Abrams, did you?
I did have a question, because we wanted to incorporate, well, let me back up. Thank you very much for coming and for addressing the issues I think that were raised by the neighborhood. I think, you know, it sounds exciting, and I really appreciate your willingness to work with the neighborhood and to try, you know, to be a good neighbor. Maybe this is a question for staff about the incorporating in the landscaping that was just mentioned, and also the hours of operation, I think so that we can have an understanding that all of us are on the same page as to what it is that we're approving tonight, so maybe some recommendation on how we can, how you want us to address that.
Sure, thank you, Mayor and council. So in your conditions of approval on the conditional use permit resolution, which is attachment one, there is language already included about the landscaping, so if you want that altered, when it's time for the council to make a recommendation, or a motion to vote on, if you want that language augmented, you would state that language at that point. If you're adding items, such as the time of operation and any other items that have been discussed, you would simply just add them as, say, item number nine, or after the last item that's listed in the condition. So really, the motion that's listed on the first page still works, and then you just add conditions, if that's the desire.
Thank you.
Councilmember Zhang?
I think we'll wait till, there's still another present, a couple of pre-
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll wait till after.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, too.
Thanks. And so now, we have a neighbor here that would like to talk as well, so if you'd like to come up and talk about your concerns?
Well, I appreciate some of the things that he brought up, and it, it does address some of the concerns that we have. The city changed the classification of this neighborhood from residential to mixed use, but most people bought their homes when this was residential. An 1800 White Bear Avenue was a bank or a junior achievement.
I'm sorry, can you state your name and address for the record? We have to have that upfront.
Sue Altheiser, 1799 White Bear. This is a far cry from a bar or banquet hall, serving alcohol and being open late at night. No matter how the city leaders try to state that this is a commercial area, it still is very residential. There are small children living across the street. Would you want your kids or grandkids playing across the street from a bar? If this is to be a dance theater, why is alcohol needed? Why does it need to be open later at night? I appreciate the fact that he's changed the hours. We would still like to see that the hours be closed, Perkins closes at 10 o'clock during the week, or 10 o'clock all the time. We would like to see it be 10 o'clock Sunday through Thursday and 11 o'clock on weekends. As far as the lights and the disruption of all of the cars pulling in and out, we would like to see some sort of a berm or fencing along with the trees so that the headlights don't get through, where if you just put some trees out there, the headlights are still going to be shining in, and whatever happens with the building lights. And I think with, if you look at the width there, I think that there can be some sort of buildup along with trees on top of it. They should be required to have security inside and outside in the parking lot when they're open. Part of the planning commission, there was, some of them were also concerned about the hours of operation and the alcohol being there. So I know there was also concerns brought up about that. Where will people smoke? They should be required to put the smoking area on the Perkins side of the building, because even if it's out any side, the sound is still going to travel, especially at night. Not to mention, you have people drinking, smoking, all of that. So there's a big grassy area between the building and Perkins, and we would like for the smoking area to be there, so that the building actually blocks the noise and the mess and the drunks being outside, basically. The lighting and brightness is something that we're concerned about, what the signage and all of that. They should be required to have some sort of traffic police out when there are, when there is banquet, banquets going on, anything that's a bigger event. And again, we don't oppose that there's a restaurant there, we oppose the alcohol and we oppose the fact that it's going to be open later, and we don't want to end up with an issue like a Stargate myth or Garrity's.
Thank you. Councilmembers, there's lights on, I don't know if there are questions for staff or Ms. Altheiser, or, okay, thank you.
I'm assuming there'll be lighting changes to the actual building, though, for the name of the-
Well, now, the next thing is the council's going to have a discussion, so, thank you. So, city manager Coleman, why don't you talk a little bit about the next steps, and then I want to hear from councilmember Zhang and councilmember Juneman.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Slawick, there's a couple of things. When the applicant decides to get signage for his building, that would go to the community design review board to, for them to look at, unless, if it meets code, there would be, you know, I don't even know if it has to, if it meets code.
Mayor and council, correct, if the sign meets code, it's just a permit process.
Right, and I think one of the things that we have to keep in mind, and I'm doing this for the council's benefit as well as the audience, is when we have a conditional use permit, the council does have certain rights to add conditions to lessen the impact or nuisance of that business. But at the same time, there are some rights that go to the business as well. And if you look at White Bear Avenue and the businesses that are located on White Bear Avenue, there isn't a fence anywhere in the city in a commercial district on White Bear Avenue, and I think a fence would actually look out of place. I agree that some landscaping would be a good idea to help shield the lights as term, and also with hours of operation, I think the hours of operation that you're proposing work for a banquet facility. And I would also say that in my experiences at the community center where we have been for many events, where the parking lot is 100% full, people figure out a way to get in and out, and most of the time, there's not a traffic officer or a reserve officer or anyone helping with traffic flow, it just works, and people take their turns and they, it works out. White Bear accommodates, has the capacity for that kind of event. So I think we have to be careful that the conditions that we place are reasonable, but that we also take into account the neighbors' concerns when we can, and I think to look at the lighting more closely and make sure the signage meets code, as in character with the neighborhood, are all perfectly acceptable, and the hours of operation, I think is a good idea to add that to the conditions, so we're all clear on that.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Councilmember Zhang?
Thank you, Mayor, and, you know, thank you for the applicant and for the residents in the neighborhood and for the city staff to, you know, look at this and for the planning commission and their input into this project. You know, when this project came through, you know, I thought nothing of it, you know, it's a banquet hall, the dance group, it's actually, I think it's like 11, like five-year-olds and 11-year-olds, right?
Up to 16.
Up, five through 16, and so I think, you know, when I saw some of the concerns about people, some of the residents, it just didn't add up, and I think we are punishing his business and his proposal because of something that happened in the past that has nothing to do. The only thing that people draw comparison is his last name, and I think it has nothing to do with this target. I think he made it clear about where the location, he's adjusting his business, not that he had to, and so I, yes, we are going to hold him accountable with the CUP, you know, with the- with the, you know, this, the smoking, the, the buffer zones, the traffic, parking spaces, we're going to hold him accountable to that as a business owner, but I don't, I feel that the conversation has veered off of what we do as a council for a, you know, conditional use permit. And so I, I got very uncomfortable with, you know, certain, having us put additions onto his business in order for us to say yes. And I think maybe the, the city attorney can talk a bit about this, about what conditions can we as a city council can even put in addition to this conditional use permit before, you know, we cross certain lines.
Mr. Beatty.
Well, Mayor and Council, actually I think the city manager articulated that pretty well. You know, what, what strikes me about this is that this is a bundle of uses, almost all of which are permitted as of right, which means that they could go in without any formal land use review. They'd have to comply with ordinances and permits and other things, but they wouldn't have to go through a formal review. There's really only one element of it that, that is sparking the conditional use permit and then that's sort of being wrapped around for the, for the whole thing. But I think that's important to keep in mind, that most of these uses, in fact, some of the uses that are being objected to are uses that are permitted as of right in that district and apparently have been allowed by zoning for very, for many years, consistent with the comp plan and consistent with the zoning. In terms of what you can do with conditional use permits, there's always a balancing between the property rights that go with the, with the property, with the, with the owner and a respect for the neighbors. And so generally you have to look at it and say, what are reasonably, what, what conditions are reasonably related to trying to carry out the objection, objectives of a comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance? And I think the city manager's comments were, were, were very good in terms of addressing that.
Thank you, Mayor.
So Councilmember Zhang, yeah, I think we're awfully close here. We're close. We're going to, I think we can, I'm hoping we can do this tonight and I, I take your point. Your point's well taken of not going beyond our responsibilities or authority. Councilmember Juneman and then Abrams.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the debate about what's allowable is not a debate. As Councilmember Zhang said, these things are all allowable in that zoning. I think we've, I understand the concern, those of us sitting up here at the Stargate issue really understand, but this is not an, this is not an application for a nightclub. This is an application for a banquet hall and a sports bar restaurant, which he has a right to have. The whole Stargate thing was such a wad that we are not going to revisit. It's just, I mean, they weren't even supposed to serve food and they were, so let's not go there. I mean, he's asking for things he's permitted to do and he has submitted some plans that at least our staff and we can look at. I have sat here long enough to know the conditional use permit is exactly what it means and if he violates any of those conditions, we pull that permit in and we can shut his door in a heartbeat. So it's not like he can do 45 things he hasn't told us about and we're going to go like this. That isn't how it works. And I do believe that, I agree with Councilmember Zhang, we cannot blame him for the people down the street in St. Paul, where by the way, their enforcement is a whole different color than ours, we don't go there. St. Paul goes out like this quite often. We don't do that. So we can't compare him to anyone else except the plan he has proposed for us. And he has what appears to be very good intentions. The family focus is exactly what was missing at Stargate. This is family focus. And he's inviting the rest of us to come too. It's not, we're going to be in this building with our families and you stay away. This is a community event place where we can gather together once in a while and get to know each other. And the only reason you need alcohol in a restaurant is because people won't come there and eat without a liquor license, let's face it. This is what happens. We can't compare him to Perkins. Perkins is a family restaurant for breakfast, lunch and early dinner. It's not all the same comparison. We have to compare apples to apples. And I would hope that with his intention and what he lays, lays, laid out for us, we're going to have a new thing to focus on so that the press and the TV news doesn't have to come and take pictures of this horrible place where 70 shots were fired and Maplewood was a terrible place to be. On the contrary, I think he's trying to establish something that puts the spotlight on a good place to be. And as he pointed out, there is a high population of Asians in Maplewood, Oakdale, North St. Paul, East St. Paul, and we have to be very careful about coming across as Caucasian fixated, where this kind of borders and it makes me very unhappy and makes me nervous. We can't go there. I want to get to know people, I don't care who they are, and we need to get to know people in a good place, a positive place. I, on purpose asked the police chief for, or the public safety director, did he see anything? And he did not. Does it mean he will not meet with the owner? Absolutely not, of course he will. And I see this owner as wanting to do the right thing. And in the end, I hope we don't have to police him, but with a CUP, we can police him, not just in the police sense, but in the you don't have a license anymore sense. And I think we need to let people do their very best, give them what they need within reason. I do appreciate your hours of operation change, I think that's wonderful because that's acknowledging that you're in an area where there are also neighbors, not just commercial neighbors. I think that's a wonderful thing. But I do believe that, as Mr. Zhang said, we have limits and I don't want us to pick up the big wooden hammer and start swinging at somebody before he's even had a chance. But I sat here through the Stargate thing. I know all about it. I sat here longer than anybody else up here about the myth. Trust me, I don't even want to hear that name anymore. Okay? So I know about those places and no, I don't want this to become that. And if he even has one eyelash that indicates he's going to do that, I'll be the first one to be on his back. Because we can't do that to this community again. We've done it before and we can't do it again. But I think, as you said, we deserve to let him try his business. I do appreciate that he had a neighborhood meeting on his own. We didn't have to say, why don't you do this? He did it on his own. He wants to know, wanted to know what the neighbors needed, wanted, wouldn't like, whatever. And part of what, and I've been here long enough to know this, part of what people don't like about any reuse is the change. Well, yeah, that's been quite pleasant for quite a long time if you like a vacant building where occasionally people break in. That's pretty quiet most of the time, but it doesn't do a thing for your neighborhood or your tax base. So we have an obligation to everyone and he's going to give us tax base. It's going to bring business that pays taxes. I think we deserve, he deserves for us to give him a chance. I do think, I agree with Councilmember Abrams, that in the conditions, we need to put the thing about the landscaping and I do think it needs to be fairly dense so the lights aren't an issue because we did that over at Keller, we've done it before, Keller Clubhouse, those people across the street didn't want their headlights in their houses and so there's a, a nice screen of trees. It can be done. So I, I don't see a way where we should be picking at things. I think we should try and be positive, move forward, let him know, you've let him know, he's responded to the concerns. And I, like I said, I'm, I'm astounded and I'm appreciative of the hours of operation being shrunk. That's a huge piece. It's a huge piece. There's a big difference between midnight and 2:00 AM and how much people can drink. There just is. And I sat here when we changed from 1:00 AM to 2:00 AM, I remember that too. And it's amazing, whenever closing is after midnight, people want to see how much they can slosh down in that last hour. So they might wait till 1:00 and start ordering up until 1:35. He's closing at midnight. I just think, I think it's a grand idea. I think you deserve a chance. I think we can all gain from this being a positive experience. And I, I think that we have rights, as you said, and we can probably be tougher than some places would choose to be. I like the hours of operation, I like the landscaping. I, I think you truly want this to be what you say it is. If it turns out not to be, then we'll all have to work together to see how we can aim it back where you wanted it. That's partially on the community. How do we accept it? How do we, how do we help him? How do we see it? So I, I think the conditions are good. I think we do not have to worry about, at least at the outset, I'm not going to worry about how much drinking is going on there because he's going to have a liquor license and he's going to have, have to pass compliance checks. And you're looking at the meanest lady that has ever sat here for compliance checks. There are victims out there who can tell you that. So let's try and do this together. I think it's a wonderful thing to do together.
Well done, Councilmember Juneman. Okay, we don't clap. Councilmember Abrams, and then I think we're going to wrap up.
I believe the applicant. I believe that you intend to do everything that you have said you're going to do and I want to give you an opportunity. And so therefore I will move approval of the conditional use permit resolution for a community center to be located at 1800 White Bear Avenue North with the addition of number nine that indicates that the, that the hours for operation from Sunday to Thursday, that they will close at 11 o'clock is what you said, and on Friday and Saturday they will close at midnight. The landscaping is already in there, Kathy.
We want to see dance landscaping.
Oh.
What number is that?
I think they have to submit, what I'd like to do though is, yeah, is approved by staff. They, they have to submit a landscape plan, it's already included in there. Yeah, so.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Abrams and seconded by Juneman. We're seeing exact motion to accept the conditional use permit resolution as amended during the meeting. Does that cover the motion?
That does.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? I just want to say we're excited, you know, and thank you for, for meeting with us and thank you, you know, the neighbors, we met with both sides. We think, I think there's a big need for what you're offering in Maplewood and I think that particular location offers a fabulous location and we'll be down to go to the sports bar and maybe work out or do some of those other things if we can. And, but we would, you know, I live very close to there, so I think it's going to be a great addition to the neighborhood, so. With that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing ayes, all, the motion passes. Thank you. Thank you for coming, for coming, congratulations and of course the meeting goes on here, so, but thank you. And staff will be in touch, I'm sure.
Yes.
Okay.[1382.13]
[inaudible]
A very short break, so two minutes, everybody, if you need to. I guess I'm happy to be back and it's good to be re-elected is, you know, we're just like a little microcosm of life up here, and sometimes I think, you know, someone said they think of different nights as their council meetings like little, like soap operas. I think of them sort of like those, like The Voice, or, but we're almost like, have these competitions, right, with these sides, and things are happening, and what's going on, and Blake Shelton turns around his chair and says, "Yeah, this is going to happen", you know, and so it's, it's, it's that feeling of the humanness of what we do. And so tonight, we had many things that were very real, and hopefully, what I want to say is that people can come together even after, you know, we maybe make decisions they don't agree with, and the ones that, and that we support the ones that we do and go for it all the way. So, so thank you, council, for a good evening. We have a couple things left. We have new business three and four. Three is a resolution authorizing the submittal to the Metropolitan Council, the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, and four is a resolution accepting the feasibility study and authorizing preparation of plans and specifications for the Gladstone Phase Three corridor. Suspect those are both Mr. Love's area, but city manager or?
Mr. Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Are you going to tee those up?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. I'm just trying to get to the staff report here. Fall asleep on the job here.
A lot of paper tonight.
There is a lot of paper. That was a long report that we did for the previous item. So here we are. Tonight, after, we have spent a lot of months and time working on the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, we have, we're asking you tonight to authorize a resolution to submit Maplewood's draft 2040 Comprehensive Plan to the Metropolitan Council for its review. And as part of our review process, we send this out to many partners, our local cities around us, regional agencies, different people weigh in on things that they would recommend in terms of changes. We're very fortunate, most of the changes are pretty insignificant in scope when you look at what we've done with this plan. And I will say, as somebody who's been in the planning and local government field for 30 years, I think this is a really amazing piece of work. And I commend the city council for encouraging us to have a really robust engagement process. And I think because we did that and we had a steering committee made up of our commissioners and our business community and residents, we have, we got a lot of input. We had, I think, over 700 participants on our website where people could comment on the plan. It's, it's just really been really well done. I think it's one of the best I've ever seen. So with that, Mayor, I would like you to call on Mr. Martin. He can give you a overview of the kinds of comments that we have. They were included in your packet. And like I said before, they're pretty, they're pretty small changes that have been requested, and some, some we took their advice, and some we, we kind of left things as they were, but we did get some input, and I'd like to have Mr. Martin tell you about that.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and council.
They were small changes, I got to say, but they're really small. The print is really good.
Sure. I just have a few slides, and I'll walk through them quickly, because I know after about 18 months, a year and a half, we're, we're on the same page here of knowing what we're moving towards. But a comprehensive plan, again, a collection of information to provide a consistent basis for decisions out to 2040 as this plan goes out to, and it's the means by which the city council can protect public investments and balancing competing private interests in decision-making. So again, this plan, the framework was designed around these four guiding principles. So as you read through the goals and policies and action items, we've identified each of those principles where there's overlap and guiding us in making those decisions. So here's a bunch of rectangles that indicates what we've been doing the last year and a half. I'm just going to focus on that last line since April, when the council approved the plan to be distributed to adjacent and affected communities. Those agencies had six months to review the comprehensive plan. Once we received all those plans, or all those comments on the city's plan, members of staff worked with a consultant team to go item by item through each comment, which is one of those attachments that council member Juneman just held up, that shows each of the comments that we received and how the city responded or didn't respond, and why we didn't, what the decision-making process was there. After staff worked through all the comments and incorporated the needed comments into the plan, a second public hearing was held at the Planning Commission. Commissioner Dom is here to speak on behalf of the Planning Commission, their recommendation. And that brings us to tonight, where we're asking the council to provide approval to formally submit to the Met Council. I do want to make note of the comments that you have as attached to your report, that we already did submit to the Met Council for an informal review. So we did receive several comments back from the Metropolitan Council, and so we think that will help us on two ends of getting their approval faster, but also no surprises at the end, because we feel that we've addressed their concerns already. So again, once the Met Council gives us their blessing, we'll come back to the city council for a final adoption, hopefully in very early 2019, but we're on the Met Council's schedule at that point. Just to quickly outline, we had two rounds of outreach, starting in 2017. Our first was based on online and going to in-person events where we, we touched all over the community and got feedback before the plan was developed, which was important to us to have a general understanding what, where the community was in terms of where we wanted to go with the comprehensive plan before any policies were developed. And then, once the plan was developed, that's our second round of outreach in 2018. Again, there was an online component, but then we went, had several neighborhood meetings throughout the city. We reached out to faith groups, business groups, and then all throughout the entire process, not just the Planning Commission, but every commission and board in the city reviewed the comprehensive plan at several points along the way. So like the Parks Commission, we've reviewed the Parks chapter and so on. So each board and commission in the city was heavily involved in the development of this plan. I won't read this, but these are all the chapters. What's not even here are the three appendices that also are included. So we, we have lots of paper on this document as well. And then again, brings us to the six-month review, which concluded in mid-October. We received comments from several of the neighboring cities, neighboring county, the Metropolitan Council, several state agencies and national agencies, and some advocacy organizations. Again, we did not find anything significant in those comments, and every comment is laid out for your, your review. And also, at the 2040 Comprehensive Plan website, we have all those comments detailed there. And then we're also posting neighboring cities and the comments that the cities are giving, we're giving to other cities. So you can track the entire process if you're interested, as we're working to complete the comprehensive plan process. So more importantly, no changes to the land use plan result, were a result of any of the comments received. So the land use plan that you approved to be distributed in April is the exact same future land use plan that you have before you tonight. Again, just to reiterate, many of the changes that did occur are very technical in nature and are, were made to respond to regional policy or requirements. So again, Commissioner Dom is here to speak on behalf of the Planning Commission, but staff is requesting city council approve staff, give staff the authorization to submit the Maplewood's draft 2040 Comprehensive Plan to the Metropolitan Council for its formal review. State statute requires this draft plan be submitted by the end of the year.
Thank you. Good report, Mr. Martin. I know there's been a lot to this, and we really appreciate your work in tracking and then pulling this all together and helping us work on it here. Mr. Dom, if you'd like to give us your report.
We're keeping him busy, too.
Oh.
Thank you, Mayor.
You heard me, but sorry about that.
City manager, council members, and the members of the city staff. I was on the steering committee, and I, I've just been thoroughly impressed with this whole process. City manager Coleman has been at many of these meetings. I don't think the mayor has missed any of them. We've had city council members partake in them. We've had Mike Martin and his staff. This has been a very impressive effort. I've been on a lot of different task forces, chaired some before at Mayo Clinic, a lot of different organizations in my life, and I've never seen anything that went as well as this. So I would like to report the Planning Commission also had members that were on this, and we voted unanimously to adopt this, so.
Fantastic. Thank you, and thanks for all your work, and to all the community members that were involved. You know, it's, one thing in Maplewood, we don't want people to not feel like we've done a thorough job of things, and I, and I always feel really good about that, and I appreciate the leadership and city manager Coleman, to you as well, because I know we used a consultant as well, and they were, they were really great. You know, they were great to work with, and some, you know, most of ours are, but you know, sometimes you feel like maybe you're not heard, and I think people felt heard, you know, and they got to do that input and the engagement. So, thank you. So are we looking for a motion?
I move approval of the resolution authorizing submittal to the Metropolitan Council, the 2040 Comprehensive Plan.
Second.
It's been moved by Juneman and seconded by Abrams. Adoption of authorization, submittal to the Metropolitan Council, 2040 Comprehensive Plan, actually adoption of the resolution. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Council member Juneman.
I just have one comment. I do, I too, I'm with him, when I say, I was impressed with how many people committed and came to the steering committee meetings. It was really, really good, and I think we had an excellent consultant.
Yes.
I've never been with anybody who can talk so fast, and yet you can still understand her.
[laughing]
So the move, the meetings moved along, but I think people did get to be heard. I just think it was a wonderful process.
Well, I was out with other cities, I have to say. I think, and you've said this too, is we, we went above and beyond and kind of just in depth, and that was good, because, you know, you want to feel like, you know, you're really planning. So thank you. Thanks again to staff, and the last thing, and to Mr. Dom for being here, is nine o'clock. It's getting to be a late meeting for us, so we're on our last item. A resolution accepting feasibility study and authorizing preparation of plans and specifications, Gladstone Phase Three Corridor Improvements, City Project 1618. We're very excited about this one, too. City manager Coleman, you're going to tee this one up?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is the kickoff for the feasibility study for Gladstone Phase Three Corridor Improvements, and we did get a copy of the feasibility report tonight from Mr. Love. So we're asking the city council to consider accepting the feasibility study, which will authorize the preparation of plans and specifications, and authorize the use of Kimbley Horn and Associates for design services as the project engineer. So the motion you're looking for tonight is to accept feasibility study and authorize preparation of plans and specs. And I would like, Mayor, for you to call on Mr. Love, and he can give you the specifics of the report.
Mr. Love?
Good evening, Mayor and council. If I could get the PowerPoint. So this is a very exciting project that I have to bring forward to you tonight. It's the Gladstone Phase Three Corridor Improvements. It's City Project 1618. So that might give you a little bit of an indication of when staff started having this concept and, and working with the watershed on. It's a very exciting joint project. As you can see here on the map, we're talking about the section of Frost Avenue, lying east of English Street and west of White Bear. And the project will also include improvements to Wakefield Park. I do want to touch on, on the motion tonight for accepting the feasibility study. Up, up to very much the last minute, we were following the 429 process, which is the process you have when you have assessments associated with it. We had a very much last minute, essentially after the reports had been written. We were contacted by MINDOT. We had, back in 2017, applied for a local road improvement grant, which unfortunately, we were not successful in getting. But they ended up adding some additional money to the program, and literally after the reports were all drafted, we found out we were successful in, in getting this grant. It's an additional million dollars towards the project. So that has a lot of implications to funding and the process. So we had essentially already paid and did the work to do the feasibility report, and we are recommending to adopt the feasibility report as a belt and suspender approach. So if something does change, and we do have to go back to the 429 process, we have already accomplished the steps that we needed to. So with that kind of a little bit of a lead-in, I'll try to go through this fairly quickly. Just as a brief reminder, this project has been, the overall corridor has been done in three phases. Phase one, running from Frost Avenue to Highway 61, was completed in 2012, and this was improvements to the road as well as the Frost Avenue Bridge. Phase two, shown in purple, this was completed in 2015, and included improvements from Eastshore Drive to English Street, and had improvements to the Gladstone Savannah as well. Which brings us up to phase three, the phase that we're talking about now. This is the final phase of this corridor. It's from, as I mentioned, from English Street to White Bear Avenue, and it also includes stormwater quality improvements.
So just, I want to talk about, you know, kind of what, when we thought of this project, there were several goals within the area that needed to be addressed, and I'm going to just touch on three of them real quick. First of all, is the conditions of Frost Avenue. Frost Avenue is, right now, this section of Frost Avenue is a mile long. The pavement's in rough shape. If you've been down Frost Avenue, you probably know this. It has a rating of 44 out of a scale of 1 to 100. It is a very wide stretch of road, so it's 52 feet wide to essentially have one lane in each direction. All the rest of the asphalt is just shoulder. So it's a very wide road with no pedestrian improvements. Which kind of brings us to my next slide here. As you can see, the dashed purple lines here represent where the project area is, and as you can see, there is a big gap here in, in the connectivity to these neighborhoods. Pedestrian improvements along this section of Frost would connect residents to both the park, Gladstone Savannah. There's, I believe, a church along here, some educational facilities, as well as the Bruce Fento and Gateway Trail.
Ask you what maybe you're going to say. So is that not be bike and ped?
Yes, and I, and I, Mayor and council, yep, I will, I have some renderings to kind of show you to kind of help communicate this. And the other item that I know the council's very familiar with is the water quality of Wakefield Lake. I know this is something that residents have approached the council with and our commissions with, and it's something that we've been working with the watershed on. So we've actually been, as you know, doing many things in this area for a while now. So what are the proposed improvements? We're proposing to reconstruct Frost Avenue. We're proposing to reduce the width from 52 feet to 26 feet wide. We're proposing to add pedestrian and bicycle facilities, both an eight-foot trail on the south side and a five-foot sidewalk on the north side. There are utility upgrades, such as the replacement of the majority of the water main. It's cast iron pipe, which is subject to breaks, and some sanitary sewer improvements, as well as replacement of the storm sewer. And one of the big parts is to improve the water quality for Lakefield.
concept and, and working with the watershed on. It's a very exciting joint project. As you can see here on the map, we're talking about the section of Frost Avenue, lying east of English Street and west of White Bear. And the project will also include improvements to Wakefield Park. I do wanna touch on, on the motion tonight for accepting the feasibility study. Up to very much the last minute, we were following the 429 process, which is the process you have when you have assessments associated with it. We had a very much last minute, essentially after the reports had been written, we were contacted by MINDOT. We had, back in 2017, applied for a local road improvement grant, which unfortunately we were not successful in getting. But they ended up adding some additional money to the program, and literally after the reports were all drafted, we found out we were successful in, in getting this grant. It's an additional million dollars towards the project. So that has a lot of implications to funding and the process. So we had essentially already paid and did the work to do the feasibility report, and we are recommending to adopt the feasibility report as a belt and suspender approach. So if something does change, and we do have to go back to the 429 process, we have already accomplished the steps that we needed to. So with that kind of a little bit of a lead-in, I'll try to go through this fairly quickly. Just as a brief reminder, this project has been, the overall corridor has been done in three phases. Phase one, running from Frost Avenue, the Highway 61 was completed in 2012, and this was improvements to the road as well as the Frost Avenue Bridge. Phase two, shown in purple, this was completed in 2015, and included improvements from Eastshore Drive to English Street, and had improvements to the Gladstone Savannah as well. Which brings us up to phase three, the phase that we're talking about now. This is the final phase of this corridor. It's from, as I mentioned, from English Street to White Bear Avenue, and it also includes stormwater quality improvements. So just, I wanna talk about, you know, kind of what, when we thought of this project, there were several goals within the area that needed to be addressed, and I'm gonna just touch on three of them real quick. First of all is the conditions of Frost Avenue. Frost Avenue is right now, this section of Frost Avenue is a mile long. The pavement's in rough shape. If you've been down Frost Avenue, you probably know this. It has a rating of 44 out of a scale of 1 to 100. It is a very wide stretch of road, so it's 52 feet wide to essentially have one lane in each direction. All the rest of the asphalt is just shoulder. So it's a very wide road with no pedestrian improvements. Which kind of brings us to my next slide here. As you can see, the dash purple lines here represents where the project area is, and as you can see, there is a big gap here in, in the connectivity to these neighborhoods. Pedestrian improvements along this section of Frost would connect residents to both the park, Gladstone Savannah, there's, I believe, a church along here, some educational facilities, as well as the Bruce Fento and Gateway Trail.
Mr. Love, can I ask you what maybe you're gonna say? So is that gonna be bike and ped?
Yes, and I, and I'll, Mayor and Council, yep, I will, I have some renderings to kind of show you to kind of help communicate this. And the other item that I know the council's very familiar with is the water quality of Wakefield Lake. I know this is something that residents have approached the council with and our commissions with, and it's something that we've been working with the watershed on. So we've actually been, as you know, doing many things in this area for a while now. So what are the proposed improvements? We're proposing to reconstruct Frost Avenue. We're proposing to reduce the width from 52 feet to 26 feet wide. We're proposing to add pedestrian and bicycle facilities, both an eight-foot trail on the south side and a five-foot sidewalk on the north side. There are utility upgrades, such as the replacement of the majority of the water main. It's cast iron pipe, which is subject to breaks, and some sanitary sewer improvements, as well as replacement of the storm sewer. And one of the big parts is the improved water quality for Lakefield Lake, and this is being done in a couple ways. By reducing the impervious area, we have proposed stormwater quality improvements within Wakefield Park, and also we have some water, water treatment education opportunities as part of this project. So what does this all mean? So here's a few renderings, kind of showing, if you recall, the other street was 52 feet wide, lots of pavement, right? So this is 26 feet wide. It's allowing the same use of the lanes out there that are out there today, one lane in each direction, and providing pedestrian facilities, both a bicycle, a trail, and a concrete walk. As you can see, this whole thing actually probably fits within the existing footprint of the road today. So we're not talking about easements and acquisition of land with this project. In a few select areas, we're gonna have a few parking bays, and as you can see here, it's 32 feet wide with still a bike and sidewalk available, still, again, fitting within our public right of way. So this is an example, looking at overhead, this is an aerial photo of, of the, of Wakefield Park at the south there. And you, as you can see, we're proposing to put a parking bay in one area. Majority of the road will be narrowed down to that 26 feet wide, and to try, I tried to produce this, try to give you an idea of, of how this all fits in. So the top view is, as it sits today, you can see there's one lane in each direction and a sea of asphalt. The other image down below is, is my attempt to kind of render what it would look like when the road gets narrowed up. You have the green there is additional green space. You have a trail on the south side and a concrete walk on the north side. So part of this project was, back in 2016, we started collaborating with the Watershed District. They have been a very good partner of ours over the years. You know, our, a lot of our principles and goals align with each other. I'm not gonna read this, but this, this is the guiding principles for our Maplewood Parks Recreation Master Plan, and, and on the right-hand side, you see goals from the Watershed District. And you can see that, and a lot of these kind of really line up, and I think this is why we've, we've been such good partners over the years. Up, leading up to this project, this is the Watershed District for Wakefield Lake. Wakefield Lake is in the bottom-left corner of the map there. This shows you how large of an area actually drains to Wakefield Lake. Up to date, we've, the watershed has led some BMP coshare projects with residents. We've collaborated with them for volume reduction rules. We've, we've, you might recall, we've constructed two spent lime treatment systems to improve the water quality there, as well as they have done some church site retrofits. So what does this all mean for water quality? And I gotta get to my, get caught back up to my page with my notes here. I apologize about that.
And Mr. Low, I just, at some point, tell us how you're, you know, I was talking to a lot of the neighbors this summer, and I'm just not sure everybody was up to speed on all of this, and I don't know how you do that, but do you do mailings or something to?
Mayor and Council, I, I will touch on that. We have held two neighborhood meetings already for the project, so I will touch a little bit more on that outreach. Yep.
Thank you.
So with the water quality, the, a TMDL study was done on, on Wakefield Lake. It was determined by the MPCA that we needed to have a total phosphorus load reduction of 51.8 pounds of phosphorus per year during the growing season. So, all those projects to date that you, that I kind of touched on, that has reduced about 20.3 pounds of phosphorus per growing season. So that's about 39% of the project. As part of that TMDL study, a potential project was identified in the Wakefield Lake area, where they are hoping to get about 18% of that reduction. The proposed project, by collaborating our efforts, what we wanna do with the project and the Watershed District, we're able to remove an additional 23.8 pounds of phosphorus. So that would be 46% of, of the, I'm sorry, 46% of the reduction that we're looking for. So by adding this project to the projects before, that brings us up to 85.1%, and the Watershed District is very excited about that. So this one project eclipses what all those other little projects were able to do. So you can see the real benefit of partnering with the Watershed District on this. Additionally, the Watershed District also is, is not just a part, partner in theory, they've committed over a million dollars of funding towards this project. So the improvements at Wakefield Park, this is the concept that was developed by Bar Engineering and Ramsey Washington Metro Watershed District, along with input from the Park and Recreation Staff and Public Works Staff. We have gone to the Park and Recreation Commission, as well as the ENRC, with the proposed improvements, and both were supportive of, of the project. The goal essentially of the design is keeping in mind that Wakefield Lake is an important feature of the park, that the stormwater features that you see on this exhibit here will be a signature amenity by framing the open play space area and providing water quality treatment that is needed for Wakefield Lake. Ramsey Washington Metro Watershed District has also commented that they plan on doing the ongoing maintenance of these basins as well. So they're very committed to this to be a long-term, successful project. Also, there's opportunities for environmental stewardship. We're looking at different signing ideas, as well as more subtle ideas. The pictures that you see here, a typical sign. We're looking at some subtle things that were, the watershed has done in our city, like the raindrop effects on the sidewalk that was in the Barley Meyer area, as well as you can see some concepts from the mall there. So what does this all mean? So the, the total proposed project is estimated at $5,249,000. I do wanna comment that as part of the resolution is approving design services with Kimbley Horn Associates for $228,000 roughly. I want, I want you to know that those fees, as well as future construction management and spec inspection costs, are all included in this total here when we look at it. Ramsey Washington Watershed District has committed over a million dollars in funding with the, what I affectionately refer to as the million-dollar positive headache, 'cause it came at the last minute, is an additional million dollars of funding for the project. So one of the changes that we made to the funding project is that we're proposing not to utilize any assessments on this project. And one of the main reasons for this is, as you know, the, the west end of this project down by English Street is a, an area that the city's been concentrating on redevelopment on. So the thought is, rather than putting on a large assessment onto those properties that we're wanting to see redevelopment, that this grant could help take place of some of that cost. City funds would be around $3,181,000. And to kind of go over some of our outreach and stuff, we've had two neighborhood meetings down at the, the fire station there off of Frost Avenue. One was in April, and the second one was in October, where we had members, not only from the city staff, but the Watershed District, as well as Rush Line members there, to really kind of try to get out outreach to the residents. We have done mailings to the residents as well. As we move forward, if, if the council wishes us to move forward with plans and spec preparation, there'll be additional neighborhood meetings to discuss the project with them as well. So that kind of brings us up, and as you can see on here, we've been to the ENRC in October, as well as the Park and Rec Commission. Tonight, we're here with you. Moving, looking forward, there would be a bond hearing, probably in January, February of 2019. Final design would take place over the winter with construction in 2019. And I know that was a rather long report, but this was, this was a very exciting project with a lot of last-minute moving parts, so I wanted to make sure that the council was up to date and had an opportunity to see some of the visuals of what we're proposing. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
So thank you. I think it's very impressive, and appreciate all the work, and I think it's gonna be really, you know, big, be a big quality of life improvement, really, everything from the bike and ped stuff to the lake, to getting that, spurring the development, having a developer be attracted to that area. So, thank you for your work on this. So you know, I have a question that you probably get tired of being asked, and you probably don't wanna go into all the details, but you know, those, the neighbors that live on the lake are back, that neighborhood way back in there, it's beautiful. And then they had the, they have these setbacks, right, where they, it's part of, you know, making sure there isn't erosion, but they talk a lot about this issue of the sand in the lake and the dredging, and they want it dredged, and, and I, you've probably heard this, right, many, many times, but did that, is that going anywhere? Does it, is this project going to help with some of those?
So Mayor and Council, this particular, well, one of the things that has helped with the sand right now, it doesn't help with the sand that's in there, but you know, with the city really reducing, you know, really going to more of just a salt-based winter program, that greatly reduces the amount of sediment that gets into the lake. So the Watershed Districts, for, to meet the TD, TMDL, their first approach is to try to achieve as much phosphorus reduction as possible from runoff. And then they start looking at phosphorus reduction from internal sources. And so I, I don't know if dredging might be part of that. If, if we're talking about dredging of the lake, that would probably be a project we'd really try to coordinate with the Watershed District. So this project won't add to it, because we're actually reducing the amount of impervious areas, so that's gonna reduce the amount of runoff, so it, it should make new sediment there less of an issue as well.
Because, yeah, there's two big catch basins that go in there, right? Or there are more than that? Where they go in, and the sand and everything?
Mayor and Council, we do have a grit chamber in line already in this system, and as you saw in that Wakefield Lake, the water's gonna be, you know, that first flush water's gonna be diverted into those large filtration basins.
Okay.
So there is gonna be a lot of more pretreatment of the water that's going there.
Okay, good. Thank you.
And, and I just would like to also add that, you know, you, when you looked at that overall watershed that you saw going to that lake, there are several ponds and different opportunities for upstream water to be treated as well.
It's very, you know, it's, I was, we know it's complex, and we know that you're telling us it's complex, and then you listen to the neighbors, and it's another layer of complexity, and yet it's a, just a beautiful area, right, that we all wanna preserve. So I think, I think these are, obviously you're doing steps to do that, so thank you for that. I don't know, Councilmember Juneman?
Just a little historic perspective, this sand silt issue has been a problem in Wakefield Lake since the 70s.
That's what I thought, and they just, it's really hard to change, right?
Right, and it's, but a lot of what he said is, but we can't, we aren't gonna be taking away what's there right now, but we're preventing it from going on any longer, so...
Getting worse, yeah. Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion or any other discussion?
I move approval of the resolution accepting the feasibility study and authorizing preparation of plans and specifications for the Gladstone Phase III corridor improvements, City Project 1618.
Second? Okay. It's been moved by Juneman and seconded by Abrams. A motion for the Gladstone Phase II improvements, City Project 14-1.
Phase III.
I see we have an A and a B resolution, is that correct? Are they two, or they are incorporated into one?
One, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So I, for the Gladstone Phase II improvements, City Project 14-1.
Phase III.
I, okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Hearing ayes, all, the motion is approved.
It's been a long time since 2003.
Well, thank you. Thanks, staff, really good work, you know, and thanks for helping us understand it better, and we're looking forward to it. Everybody, a good meeting tonight, it's 9:20, one of our longest.
Oh, please.
But thanks for, everybody, for being here, and have a good rest of the week.